Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock, so time for the very last City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission for 2018. So I will officially call it to order, and we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Akers?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schreider?
Here.
Mr. Loftus came back early just to be with us, so we appreciate that. We have a full house tonight. Agenda for tonight? Any additions, corrections, changes, staff? We good to go? Okay. I need a motion for this, please.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you. Okay. Minutes from last month. Any additions, corrections, changes? Complaints are not authorized. We good? I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from November 7.
I'll second.
Thank you, and we'll do that by general consensus.
I will abstain, because I was not here.
Okay. That's fine. Tonight, we have two public hearings and a decision item and a subdivision. So without further ado, let's get to Dunkin' Donuts.
This is case number PUD 18-1, specific site plan number one, on an application filed by Gilligan Company, 3805 Edward Road, Suite 680, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45209. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a 2,215-square-foot Dunkin' Donuts on 0.6232 acres of land. The property is located on the northwest corner of Lance Road and North Fairfield Road. Property is further described as Book Five, Page Five, Part of Parcel 126 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Do we have someone representing Dunkin' Donuts?
Good evening. My name is Kara Burkhardt. I'm at 5335 Far Hills Avenue. I'm here on behalf of Gilligan Company to talk to you about the Dunkin' project tonight. You have the staff report, which staff did a pretty thorough job of explaining our project. We're okay with all the conditions of the approval. I did have one question about the -- or one item about the sign. I understand that signage isn't part of tonight's approval, but on the ground sign, the condition does talk about that the base needs to be brick or stone, which if that's what you ultimately want, we're okay with that. But the building doesn't have brick or stone, and we would just propose to match the materials of the building with the base. Like I said, either way, it's -- I just didn't want it to get pinned down to the stone when we think it should be, you know, similar materials. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the site. We worked pretty closely with staff to come up with the site plan that you see before you. We ended up a little bit further off of Fairfield Road than we wanted to, but that seems to be where the access worked the best, not only for our customers, but also with, you know, for safety and access with the fire department. We, you know, we were -- it was a tough site. We were constrained with some of the setbacks for the residential, which we understand. So we've tried to protect, you know, that piece, you know, and then not getting the access off of Fairfield Road, which we also understand just makes that corner a little difficult because of the shape of the lot. But we think we have a great plan. We're excited to be in Beaver Creek, and I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much. I have a feeling that if you make donuts, they will come. They'll find you.
Yeah, right.
Staff report, please.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 18-1. It's the Dunkin' Donuts Specific Site Plan. It's the first site plan of the PUD 18-1. The applicant's looking at approval to allow for the construction of a 2,200-square-foot restaurant on a little bit more than a half acre. This property is located in central Beaver Creek, just north of the intersection of Dayton-Zenia and North Fairfield Road. It's actually at the southwest -- or I'm sorry, the northwest corner of Lance and North Fairfield Road. This is kind of a closer-up look of the entire PUD, which was rezoned in the spring of this year. And the 0.62 acres that we're talking about is here at the easternmost portion of the PUD. Again, this is a highlight. This is a closer aerial view of that 0.6 acres. There's some woods and open field throughout the 0.6 acres. Again, the property which I've highlighted, the entire PUD which I've highlighted in yellow, was rezoned in the spring of this year. To the south of it is a new PUD. This zoning map hasn't been updated since the rezoning of that other PUD on Rock Drive, but that is a commercial PUD. There is, on this B2 property is a daycare, and then there is a car wash on this B3 property south of that. Across is CPUD 7-4, it's the Wright Pack Credit Union, and then there's a shopping area and a tractor store. And then on to the north and to the west is single-family residential. Seen here is the proposed site plan for your consideration. There is one access point to the site. It is as far away practically as we can get from the intersection of North Fairfield Road and the Lance Road stub right now. It is obviously a full access. There'll be a right in, or I'm sorry, right out and left out. The street dead ends at this point right now, but in the future, you know, it is intention for Lance Road to extend down to Wallaby, past the newcomer funeral place, and ultimately connect to Dayton-Zenia Road. But once you get on site, it is a counterclockwise motion throughout the site. There's parking on both the east and west edges of the parking field. Based on the zoning code and the size of the building and the number of employees that they are proposing to have, they're required to have 15 parking spaces. Their plan does show 17, so they do meet the minimum requirement for the number of spaces. Also, they said that a majority of their business, something like 70, 75?
I think it's about 80%.
80% of their business is done through the drive-thru. And so, you know, we want to make sure that there was enough room for stacking. And based on the number of cars that you can see kind of overlaid back to the building, there is a double-drive-through system to the north that's for online orders. But based on that, you know, they can have up to 12 cars stacked. And it's not a typical drive-thru restaurant where, well, a traditional one, we'd seen like the, you know, the fast food where they've got 50 different things on the menu that you could order. So it tends to go a lot quicker than you would go through like a McDonald's or Burger King or Taco Bell. The dumpster is in the northwest corner of the property, and we did add a condition that, you know, it is screened by a structure to help soften that view from the residential properties to the north. Seen here is the proposed building itself. It's 54 feet long, 35 feet wide, and about 22 feet to the top of the parapet wall. The majority of the building will be a dark gray fiberboard. There is some wood look panels on each of the four elevations. You can see those. And there is a metal red, I'm sorry, an orange metal accent band over the entrances as well as over the drive-thru windows that are on the west side of the building. Seen here is the proposed landscape plan. And as you can see, they do show a good amount of landscaping, especially between the, this property, the parking lot, and the residential properties to the north. And that's something that we wanted to focus on, because we do want to give adequate, even though it's a 20-foot buffer rather than we'd see a 50-foot buffer, you know, we want to get that as dense plantings as we can. So they're proposing to use a row of arborvitae along the northern property line and then some good shade trees. They are showing landscaping around the base of the building, which is something that, you know, that we find it's important to help break up the sidewalk that surrounds the building with the building itself, so that there is a transition and some softening of the building area. In terms of signage, they propose wall signs on all four elevations. You can see, you know, they're not overbearing on any of the elevations. And because this will be visible from all four directions, coming south and north on North Fairfield and on the Lance, and eventually coming from the Lance stub, you know, and because we had them upgrade the building and add some nice features to the building, you know, we wanted, we thought it was appropriate to have signs on all four elevations. So they show 37 and a half square foot building, excuse me, wall signs, and some 23-square-foot wall signs, and then some, you know, Beaver Creek runs on Dunkin's on the east side, and then another small sign on the west side. So it comes up to 180 square feet of signage on the building, and that's not intrusive, in our opinion, it's not intrusive or overbearing for the site. They do one, they do plan to have one ground sign on the site, which is in the northeast corner. We didn't have any design plans. We did add condition, it'd be five-foot tall, 25 square feet sign face, and that brick wrap base, brick base and wrap. Staff doesn't have a problem with having the materials being more closer resembling to the building. They don't have any stone or brick on the building. If they want to use, you know, the combination of the dark gray cement board fibers or any other, I mean, we can word it so that it, you know, gives a lot of more design control or design opportunities for the applicant and staff. Staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request. There are, sorry. Some way. 21 conditions in your resolution for your consideration. And I'll be happy to answer questions following the hearing.
Thank you very much. The usual, very comprehensive report. Staff, thanks a lot. This is a public hearing, so if there are folks who would like to speak, ask questions, or whatever, I would ask you to keep it to three minutes, so we aren't here most of the evening. But if there's someone who are, if there are folks who would like to speak, step right on up. Don't be shy. Give us your name and address, and have at it for three minutes. Don't be shy. Last chance? Did we have any written input?
No.
No written input. Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and I'm going to start from my left this evening.
I have a question for the applicant, please. Hello.
Good evening.
So 80% of your business is through drive-through. What are the main hours? Is it like 6:00 AM to 8:00?
We're open between, from 7:00 to 7:00. But 80% of that, 80% is before 11:00 AM. So it's primarily morning. You know, we like to locate on the going-to-work side. People swing in, get whatever they're going to get, and then get on out of there. We service a customer approximately every 90 seconds, so we're running through the drive-thru pretty quick. The second lane Randy touched on, this is Dunkin's new concept design. They call it their new generation. So it's going to be a new building, different than the other ones that are in the Dayton area. You could notice that from the elevations, but the second drive-through is to facilitate their online and mobile ordering, with the thought being if you've already placed your order and already paid, you just can bypass the waiting and you jump ahead. You go around that outside loop, and then you jump in line, you grab your order out the window, and you go. So that, you know, that even speeds up our matrix a little bit as far as how quickly we service customers.
Kind of a quick follow-on, that 80% of 80%, you know what your base, you know, your base customer number is on a daily basis? Do we?
I'm sorry, I don't have that answer. I could?
It's okay. It's, I mean, assuming hundreds of people come through?
We have different stores that, you know, that, Mr. Gilligan that owns these franchises, he has several in the Dayton area. He operates most of his stores down in Cincinnati. You know, depending on the area, they generate maybe 100 cars per day on their, in the peak hours, I mean, in their big producers. I don't know what those numbers are as far as total customers. I can get that answer for you.
No, that's okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And then just a follow-up with staff then. So until Lance Road gets extended, are we going to be able to handle that outflow of people between 8:00 and 11:00, or 7:00 and 11:00, 6:00 and 11:00, whatever?
Yeah, I mean, there's a traffic light. There's an existing traffic light here, so, I mean, I wouldn't see a problem. I mean, there's not going to, it's...
They're not going to stack up there trying to go left? I mean, I was, I used to go down to the business next door, and you'd get stuck there for a little while, and that's what...
Right.
Not a ton of people going to that other business.
I mean...
If you're running through a person every 90 seconds, if it's...
If that's the case, I mean, we would work with the city engineer to adjust the timing of those lights, to make sure that there isn't a backup of traffic.
Perfect. Thanks. That's it. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thanks, staff.
Ms. Akers?
I have no questions.
I just have one for Mr. Burkett. The signage that's on the rear of the building, is that going to be visible to the residential behind?
Um, okay. You're talking about the signage that's back here?
It would be on the rear, because there's residential to it.
That's why we had, this is a vacant lot right now.
Sure, but it's currently zoned.
But it's currently zoned, and that's, these will be 6-, 8-foot arborvitae. Will it be visible? Probably when they build a house, yeah. I mean...
And that's currently an empty lot. When you say empty, there's...
It's a vacant lot.
There's nothing there.
Right, it's...
But it is zoned R1 right now?
Yeah. I mean, it's an empty lot.
Would, staff, would you have an issue with us wanting to remove that sign on the rear? I mean, it doesn't serve any...
It's not illuminated.
Yeah, or not illuminated?
I mean, it was mostly for the people coming from the north, heading south, so they can see the building.
But they are going to have a ground sign too, right?
Right. The ground sign would be in this location here.
Yeah, I mean, it makes that R1 lot very unattractive if we ever wanted to spend it, and almost requires us to rezone it to occupy the lot again. I mean...
That's a perfect site for R0.
Yeah. That's my only concern, other than that.
Yeah, I mean, right now, if you look at our land use plan, actually, I don't have a map of our land use plan up, but that residential lot to the north is actually land used for office. So if it should be rezoned, I mean, it's looking to go as an office or neighborhood, a neighborhood office or residential office. So, I mean, there is a, I mean, a partial commercial component to that property to the north. It's just not zoned that way right now.
But it's not zoned today. It's not zoned, and there's no guarantee that it would ever get rezoned. Today, somebody could buy that land, build a house, and...
They could.
But it would be very hard for them to do that.
And if the Dunkin' Donuts were up, they'd know the sign would be there, too, so...
Sure. Okay. That's all the questions I have. Appreciate it.
So I've just got one. The sidewalks on the outer edge, are those going to be consistent for future developments that are going to extend beyond this building? Or is there a plan to have some consistency when the rest of the area gets developed?
I mean, we'll have, however we, whenever we extend Lance Road, there'll be sidewalks along both sides of the road.
Right, but they'll be, they're designed to be consistent with what's going to happen in the future. What happens in the future will be consistent with what they're building right now.
Correct.
So it's not going to be just a hodgepodge of different...
Four foot, and then transitioned at six, and then four. Yeah, no, I mean, it'd be a standard sidewalk. It's the same sidewalk, it's across the street right now on Lance Road. Same width, same material.
All right. That's all I had.
Don't run off. We have fought long and hard for sidewalks in Beaver Creek, and it's taken years and years, but they finally are connecting, so, trust me, they'll make sure that we have The, I noticed the, in the, in the conditions, we have what I was looking for, the cutoff the two hours after, after the store closes, and the poles being 16 feet. Do you think 16 feet might be too high, as close as we are? I know we have a light spillover thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we've done in every development when we have residential...
Okay, well, as long as there's no, we don't have a foot candle spillover.
They'll have to have the zero-foot can at the property line.
And they can always, they can shield them.
And, yeah, they'll, the LED lights now can be controlled very succinctly, and they'll have to be full cutoff fixtures as well.
I, to an extent, share your concern about that sign on the north side. It's kind of hard to tell whether it's, I don't mind the sign there. I'm just a little concerned about illuminating it.
Mr. Chair, if I can add something?
Sure, please.
I'm not 100% positive on this, but I'm pretty sure that lot is actually for sale with a big commercial lot...
Right.
Sign on it.
Oh, nobody's going to build a house there.
So I don't know that they're even, I don't even know that anybody's trying to go residential. I don't.
So, well, if that's the case, and I know that we, that we show that as either R0 or office.
Right, and there was a house there at one point, and the owner realized that nobody was going to want to live there, so they tore it down and turned it into an empty lot.
Well, unless they're real donut fans, and now it's too late.
Right. That would be, that would be very convenient.
The sign base, whatever, whatever matches the building, I think, is, sense of the planning commission is probably okay. I do have a question for our applicant, and I'm not sure whether you're going to know the answer, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but one of the things that we look at with grocery stores is they have deliveries at oh dark 30 every day. And I'm wondering, since you all prepare your donuts fresh every day, are there going to be delivery trucks coming in there in the middle of the night or at 3:30 or 4:00 in the morning? I mean, you know, big Cisco semis or anything like that?
No. I mean, there would be no one there to receive the deliveries if they came, you know, in the night.
So it's not like a bakery where you, they come in early in the morning?
No. We don't make anything. There's a commissary, and the donuts are delivered, so nothing is made on-site.
Okay, fine, good. Take care of that. And one more question for staff. I'm sorry, thank you very much. The plantings on the south side, are they far, they're set back far enough so we don't have a line-of-sight problem with people on Lance Road wanting to make a right on red onto southbound Fairfield?
Yeah, are you talking about here or here?
Correct.
Here, along the eastern property line? Yeah, I mean, the road is out here.
Okay.
So you'd have to, I mean, if you're looking, if you're sitting here, you're looking that way, and that's...
Okay.
And I'll double-check that with the city engineer, but I looked, I thought of that when I first saw this, and, you know, we use the canopy trees where the first five feet are just the stump anyways, even when they're planted.
And you don't think that's going to be a problem? It won't be as long as Lance's stub, but the plantings there along the front, just...
Out here?
Right.
We'll double-check the species and make sure that they're, they're not...
Right, because once Lance is cut through, people are going to be using it for a cut through.
Right.
And it's going to be a lot busier than it is now.
Right, sure. Yeah, I mean, we'll make sure that these are, the trees they put in are, in fact, the ones that have the five foot, the first five feet or trunks, and then it opens up, and all the bushes and shrubs are the low, the ever lows, and stuff like that, stuff that doesn't grow tall.
As long as they're not ash trees, we're good.
No ash trees.
Thanks. Gentlemen, Ms. Akers, any second helpings here? We good? Okay. I would like a motion then, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 18-1, SSP 1, with the attached 21 conditions.
All right. I've got a motion.
Do we need to change that? We need to amend 21.
Do we need to amend 21?
Okay.
20, yeah.
Oh, the ground sign. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I move to amend condition number 20, to remove the brick or stone base and replace that with some type of wording that says with a base congruent to the building design.
Or compatible?
Sure. Or compatible to the building design?
Well, it works for you all.
You say consistent with the, consistent with the...
Yeah, one foot.
Shorter the better.
Yeah, just consistent of similar design and materials as the building.
Right. Consistent with the building design and materials. Good catch.
I second.
Okay, since you're the maker of this, do you have any problem with that?
No, I do not.
Okay. Good, then we don't have to vote on it. We don't have to vote on that. We just need a second then.
Mr. Chair, I second.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the, with the 21 conditions, with the modification to number 20. Anything else for the good of the order? Then, if you would be so good as to read the roll.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0, and we're looking forward to fresh donuts in Beaver Creek.
Thank you.
Our second public hearing tonight is PUD 18-3, Dollar General Store, which was tabled from last month, so we need to untable it first. Don't be shy.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to untable.
Thank you.
Second.
And I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, now we can proceed.
This is case number PUD 18-3, specific site plan number one, on an application filed by Beaver Creek DOHP LLC, 9010 Overlook Boulevard, Brentwood, Tennessee, 37027. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a 9,100-square-foot retail store on 3.41 acres. The property is located at 3867 Dayton-Zenia Road. Further described as Book Two, Page 11. Parcels 140, 141, 144, 145, and 146 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here representing the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Bob Gage. I'm with GBT Realty, 9010 Overlook Boulevard, Brentwood, Tennessee. And yes, here representing the Dollar General, proposed project. We have gone through and worked with staff. There are, I believe, 22, 28 conditions of approval. We do have, would like to discuss a few of those with you. I can do that now, or you can hear from staff first, however you want to do it.
Well, y'all are the applicant, so you tell us, and then we'll...
Yes, sir.
We'll listen to the staff report.
Okay. Let's see, on this third page of the staff report, item number two, cornice cap, referring to the exterior elevations. Cornice cap shall be constructed around the north, east, and west elevations of the building. We would prefer not to put a cornice cap on this building. The elevations that we have proposed, we are putting the brick on all four sides with the architectural accents, and typically on a building like this, we do put a metal coping cap on the entire building. It will match the color of the brick. With the upgraded exteriors on four sides of this building, we are just trying to save a little bit of money. We don't think that the coping cap is going to add that much to it. The cornice, I'm sorry, would add that much to it, and we would prefer to go with the coping cap. Item number three, in that same section, exterior downspouts prohibited except on the southern elevation of the building. We're going to have a little bit of trouble with that just because of the construction of the building and the slope of the roof. The roof actually slopes to the east, and that is typically where the downspouts are located. To put all of the downspouts on the south elevation, that's actually the short side of the building, and the roof does not slope in that direction. So we would ask that we would be able to modify that exception and allow us to install the downspouts and gutter on the east side of the building. As we go through the rest of this, do you want to talk about each one of these, or you just want me to give you, give you a list of...
Go.
You want me to go? Okay. The, the next section that we would like to talk about is on page four. It's the second paragraph down, and it speaks to curbing the entire parking lot. We would prefer not to do this. This is the design that we typically have for this type of construction, is sheet draining of the parking lot. We do utilize wheel stops, there's a couple of reasons for that, one is whenever we do curb the entire parking lot, the rainwater tends to pick up more contaminants and send them to the detention facility. If we sheet drain, it'll sheet drain everything off, the grass will scrub the contaminants out prior to it going into the detention facility. And it also, once we do curb everything, we do have to add catch basins, we have to pipe everything to the detention facilities. It basically changes the entire design that we have in place, that we have proposed at this point. So, we would like to go with the proposed design with the wheel stops, less the curbing. I was out at the site earlier before I came by here, I drove by there just to see what the adjacent properties had in regard to the design of the parking lots and the curbing. There is the senior center across the street from us, there is a limited amount of curbing there, it looks like that it's on a downhill slope, and it's basically used to, for direction, to direct the storm water into the proper catch basins. We don't have that scenario on our side of the Dayton Zine Road, we feel that the, it's not needed. The sheet draining works great, the design that we have in place works great with the sheet draining and the wheel stops. Couple of paragraphs down from that, there is mention of a five-foot sidewalk along the western elevation of the building. Staff had concerns that without any wheel stops there and the depth of five feet, that cars would pull up to the very limit of the sidewalk, and the overhang on the front of the cars would basically make the sidewalk useless. They have recommended that we widen that to six feet, we don't have a problem doing that, we can either do it that way or do it with wheel stops to be consistent with the design of the rest of the parking lot. I did have an issue with storm water detention, it is actually on the next page, page five, and it is, well... I'm sorry, it's not storm water detention, it's landscaping and screening section, page five. There is a couple of extra islands that is requested, some interior trees, we don't have any issues with that, we can put both of those in place. The one thing that we do have a problem with is the request to put low shrubs around the base of the building. This, in our opinion, and from our experience, is a construction issue for us, it's a maintenance problem for the building. Once you introduce landscaping up next to the building, it tends to deteriorate your footings over time. We tried to design these things to last for thirty years without any maintenance on them, and we'd request that we remove that condition with the landscaping, low shrubs around the base of the building. In the past, whenever we've run into this, we have offered up possibly some planters that sit on the sidewalk in the same locations that are requested here, we wouldn't have any issue doing that if that's something that you would entertain. Let's see, as we go down to the end of that section, the landscape and screening, staff has added conditions that the final fencing that we are showing, screen fence, not be wood, that it be changed either to vinyl or to be removed completely. I believe that we would opt to remove that fence. Don't have any issue with the lighting comment, sixteen feet is fine. Actually, there is a comment there that says that the lighting be reduced to twenty-five percent of its normal operating levels within an hour after closing. All the exterior lightings are turned off an hour after the store closes, all less one, we do keep one on in the parking lot just for security reasons overnight. Very limited, we'll have some lights on the interior as well for the same reason. Let's see, the signage, we are showing a sixteen-foot tall, six-foot wide, basically what we call it is a pylon sign, it's a pole sign for the yard, and it has been requested that we do a ground sign no higher than five feet tall. We do have a version of a monument that we do in locations such as this, the difference is, it is eight feet tall and not five feet tall. And I would ask that we modify that to eight instead of five. I believe I'm good with everything else, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions for you if you have any.
Thanks very much.
Yes, sir.
Now it's staff's turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of planning commission. The case you have before you is PUD eighteen dash four, it's the Dollar General... I'm sorry, it's eighteen dash three, that's why I was confused, it's the Dollar General Specific Site Plan. They're looking to approval for a specific site plan to construct a ninety-one-hundred square foot Dollar General on about three-and-a-half acres. Property is located at central Beaver Creek, towards the west end of the city, just about a quarter mile east of the intersection of Grange Hall and Dayton Zine Road on the south side of the street. As planning commission may remember, this property was rezoned in the spring of this year, and actually was just approved by, at the November City Council meeting, the third reading, so there is a thirty-day referendum period. So, we added a condition that that thirty-day referendum period go without a referendum being put on, onto this rezoning. Don't anticipate that happening, but technically, the zoning's not in place until after that thirty days, so there's that condition. To the north is the senior center, as the applicant stated, there's a multi-tenant retail building here as well to the north. This is a auto deal, or, well, they do sell some cars there, but it's an auto repair store, and then there's residential to the south and also to the west. Again, this area seen in yellow was rezoned in the spring of this year. Seen here is this proposed specific site plan, and they're proposing one entrance that does line up with the entrance that is to the multi-tenant retail building to the north, so there is that, there is a lineup of those two entrances with each other. As the applicant stated, you know, you could see throughout a big portion of this site, they are not proposing to add curbing. Now, this is, since I've been here, I've done every, every project that I've worked on, we've had curbing throughout the entire site, it's a drainage issue, but I mean frankly, it's also an aesthetic issue, you know, we wanna, we wanna keep a consistent design standard of having that curb and gutter system, yeah, that will require catch basins to be put in the projects, but again, ever since I've started here, it's been twelve years, you know, we've had the catch basins and the storm water detention. I haven't seen, other than some sheet flow into like rain gardens in the middle of the parking lot like we have at the Soyn Hospital, but again, that's just to get into that area, and that's a water quality pond, but we, you know, we typically have the catch basins and the piping into the storm water detention pond. Also, with the five-foot sidewalk that the applicant mentioned, I don't have a problem keeping that five feet and putting the brick, the wheel stops there. The intent is, is to, again, if you've got a car and it pulls its wheel up against that curb, and it overhangs two feet, then you have a three-foot sidewalk. So, if you, if you hold that parking block back, you know, they're proposing the twenty-foot spaces, so I don't have a problem with those parking blocks. Is that, that essentially gives that two feet back by putting that stop there. But we wouldn't want to have the stops up here along Dayton Zine Road, you know, that, you know, having the the curb better affords the opportunity to have landscaping up in between the parking lot and Dayton Zine Road. One of the things, one of the things that we asked the applicant, and they have provided, is, you know, in the next couple of years, we'll be widening Dayton Zine or Dayton Zine Road at this location, adding the sidewalks on both sides of the street, as you have to the east and to the west of this section of town. And along with that project, we're gonna be adding sidewalk along Dayton Zine here, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, we do have a sidewalk stub. Looking at the design, it's just, it was, it's just kinda problematic to where you're gonna have people walking on the sidewalk, and if a car is parked here, they'll be walking right into it. It's not a big issue, and it's something that can be easily redesigned slightly and, you know, kind of change the way. But we just wanna make sure that that gives us the opportunity to change that sidewalk design just a little bit, so that, you know, it's more accessible for everyone, including wheelchair users and everyone. So, that's a condition there. And as the applicant stated, you know, we have these parking spaces out front, and to help break up that, we were proposing to add an additional landscape island here, with, and obviously, they'll have to put a tree in that, in that landscape island as well. Seen here is the landscape plan, and they do show good landscaping along the northern property line between the, between the parking lot and the street, but I think that, you know, the, having the curb and gutter really does separate that better, and have people not running into it, or water, you know, salt and everything else getting onto that. One condition that the applicant stated is, you know, we did have a condition that they have to have some landscaping between the base of the building and the sidewalk. Now, as I stated with the last application, with the Dunkin' Donuts, you know, we do wanna see that. Now, does it have to be the entire length? No, but if we could get some blocks, some, you know, two or three spaces on each side, I think that just adds a good trans, it creates a good transition between the concrete sidewalk and the improved wall, so it's not just construction going into construction, there is that transition with the landscape and the softscape, and it's, I think it's just aesthetically, it's better looking that way. So, everything in green is what they're already proposing, but we were requesting that, you know, they also do what we're having read now. Again, that doesn't have to be a solid line of landscaping, just something, you know, to, to give us some, some breakage in that construction point. The applicant did mention the fence, there was a condition, 'cause we were, we had some concern with the residential back here. After further looking at that and aerials, there is a good a bit amount of woods right here. So, we don't have a problem if we just remove the fence altogether, and I think that the fence won't really be that necessary. 'Cause when we were looking at it originally, there was leaves on all the trees, and we weren't sure how that would look in the wintertime, but if you go by it now, I think that the existing, even non-desiduous trees provide a good screening, screen between the proposed Dollar General and the residential to the south. So, again, I don't have a problem removing that fence altogether. Seen here are the proposed elevations, they're showing, this is fiber cement board. They're fiber board, but it's red brick, that, well, it's fiberboard that appears to be red brick, and then there's fiberboard that appears to be gray stone. And originally, we got a building that was just red brick on all four elevations with no design features, and we do appreciate their addition into some architectural features. We wanna try to, see, these are projects that we've worked on, this is the Pet Valley, it was, it came about as Jack's Pets, this is the the multi-tenant building at Kempco Property there next to Kroger, and these are recent projects, and we wanna kinda keep that trend. Went down the street, the AAA building and the multi-tenant building next to that, they have the, the cornice, and we're trying to keep that theme kinda going up and down Dayton Zine Road, and that's why, that's why we asked for the cornice cap on this. Also, will help shield some of the RTU units on the top, we do have a condition that those be shielded anyways, but I think that the cornice cap will aid that as well. In terms of the downspouts, you know, there is an opportunity to mount those inside the wall, and that's why, you know, we, we're not saying they can't have downspouts on any particular elevation, but when they do have them, we want them to be intern, inside the wall. If that's, planning commission does have the option to allow the exterior downspouts, that if you do go that route, I'd like to add a condition that they be painted to match the adjacent material, so they at least blend in. I think that with the landscaping that they're gonna have, I believe this is the elevation he's talking about having the downspouts on. We, right now, the condition only allows it on this southern elevation, but if he wants to have it on the eastern elevation, it's not... Well, it's important that we do say that it be painted to match the exterior of the building. You know, the lighting plan, you know, we didn't see any problems with the lighting plan, we think that that's, that they do have a good amount of lighting, that it's not overbearing, and it does what we need it to do. In terms of the signage, they proposed one wall sign on the front of the building, and that's seventy-one square feet, and we didn't have a problem with that wall sign. Where we did have a concern was, as the applicant stated, you know, they wanted a sixteen-foot tall sign, and, I mean, honestly, for a ninety-one-hundred square foot building, we felt that that was just way too big, I mean, that's bigger than what, you know, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square foot Kroger has. What we would typically offer a building of this size would be like we offered Dunkin' Donuts, you know, five, five feet tall, twenty-five square foot per sign face, and beyond that brick material, or materials to match the building, or similar to the building. So, that's the condition we're proposing, we think that that's, that's an appropriate amount of signage for a project of this size. Few of the other conditions, because there's five lots right now, you know, we did require a final subdivision to combine all those lots. Again, the landscaping, we did, some of this stuff we did talk about, the trash enclosure and the signage, no outdoor speakers, so that, not that they've proposed any, but, you know, we just kinda add that in to make sure that there's no music or anything like that in the parking lot. I don't have, this fence can go away, or, I mean, we can, we can put on there, no fence required, or we just remove it, remove the condition altogether, and then they wouldn't be required to have a fence. One of the other things, you know, these are kinda big walls, and they'll be facing North Fairfield, or, I'm sorry, Dayton Zine Road, and we have a condition that windows, we put on that north elevation, they can be faux windows, like the, if you notice on the backside of Speedway on North Fairfield Road, there's some windows there, and those aren't windows, they're, they're just faux window, I mean, they're, they're, they're just, you know, they're there to add architectural features to the building and help break up the elevation, so that's, if they, if they can't make their floor pans work with windows there, we can have them add those, those windows are architectural features in front of that building, so there is that condition as well. There are twenty-eight conditions in your resolution for your consideration. Make sure we've covered everything. Staff does recommend approval, subject to these twenty-eight conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you. Boy, it's comprehensive reports from everybody, that makes it easier for us. This is a public hearing, so I will make the same offer I made the last time, if you would like to come forward and ask questions, speak for, speak against, I'll just gavel you down at three minutes, so don't be shy, step right on up. You guys just must like to come to meetings. Last chance? Any written input?
No.
Okay, I'll officially close the public hearing, and I'll start with Ms. Akers.
I guess my questions are for the applicant. Could you further explain why you are in, or why you would prefer the eight-foot sign opposed to the five-foot sign, and do you think that the five-foot sign would be inadequate?
I know that the retailer is going to have a problem with the five-foot sign, that is why I'm requesting the eight. We do have two prototypical signs that we use for this retailer, one is the twenty-foot tall pole sign, the other is an eight-foot tall monument sign with a base that matches the building. That is the standard, when we can't get that, they beat me up pretty good, so that's why I'm asking for the eight-foot, that is what the retailer is gonna push for.
I guess I don't have any further questions right now.
Okay. I'm sure the rest of us do.
Yes, I have quite a few questions, I actually wanted to talk to staff first before I talked to the applicant. Mr. Burkett, it seems like we've got a lot of issues between the applicant and the city, do we, do you feel like they're rectifiable at this point?
As long as, as long as the twenty-eight conditions stay similar to the way I presented them.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't sound like we're in agreement.
That's, I mean, typically, we don't have that many conditions, but there was just some issues, and that's just where we're at, so. I mean, I don't think that this is sites... I mean, I think this, this is a good project, we wanna see this move forward, we just wanna do it in the way that, you know, the same standard that we've held people for decades.
Hundred percent, yep.
And so, that's where the, that's where the conditions really come from, is those are the standards that we've been setting for everyone that's come before them, and everybody will come after them, and they know that their neighbors will, should the neighbor develop, they'll have the same standards, you know, not what's existing, obviously, I mean, Murphy's, or, I'm sorry, Dyes, I believe, that was done fifty years ago, so. But, I mean, in the future, we'll hold their neighbors to the same standards, so.
All right, well, I've got a couple of questions for the applicant then.
Yes, sir.
So, you've kind of explained why you have some of the issues that you have, what are your thoughts if we do attach those conditions? At this point, because I don't see anything from the city that's incongruent with anything else that we've done previously.
Understood.
We have curbs everywhere, we have some of the same standard signage. I know there's some, some issues, but Dollar General obviously goes into certain communities that have signage standards, some that don't even allow signage at the, at the street side. If we attach these twenty-eight conditions, is this project gonna move forward?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna...
It will, yes.
Obviously, it's my job to come here and to get as close to our prototypical design as I can get. If I could address the cornice issue one more time while, while we're, while we're talking? I understand that we're gonna, we're gonna be required to put a cornice on the building, can we limit that to the north side of the building, instead of the three sides? Is that... Is that something that you would entertain?
I mean, it's going to be visible on three sides, so I'd imagine that's why they want the cornice on three sides. It's not a one-sided building, so. I mean, that's up to my fellow commissioners if they want to, they want to address that, but myself, you know.
I just wanted to throw that out.
I believe the city's done their due diligence in that we, we would be.
Yes, sir.
Myself. So that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Your turn.
I don't have any questions.
All right.
No further questions, Mr. Chair.
I've got a few for staff. I'd be derelict in my duty if I didn't have questions. The, these are detention, not retention basins.
They'll be dry ponds.
Two of them, is that correct?
Dry.
So they're, they're only wet after a rainstorm.
Correct, they're not intended to hold water.
Okay, yeah, so they're, they're retention, not detention.
Correct.
Took me years to remember which one is which.
It's the other way. They detain the water, they don't retain the water.
Right, retention is a wet, no, retention is a wet pond.
Retention retains the water indefinitely, detention detains it temporarily.
Detention detains it, slows it down, yeah, that's what I meant.
You just had me turned around a little bit there.
The, typically, when we have a curbed parking lot with catch basins, they usually have at least one oil trap somewhere along the line just to keep all the oil drippings and, and leaky brake fluid and everything else that comes out of cars from going into the groundwater or the detention.
They'll have to, I mean, they'll have to maintain the Ohio EPA water quality standard pond, in addition.
Right, so, and this is, this is part of, of curbing and catch basening a parking lot, correct?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I mean, there's the opportunity to use the ground, the dirt and the grass for that, but that's not something that we've done since I've been here. I mean, we have the Ohio EPA water quality pond that filters the water and then puts that into the, into the regular detention pond or retention pond.
Would, would staff have a whole lot of heartburn with, with planters along the building rather than actual in-ground planting?
I mean, my preference.
As long as we, as long as we, we conditioned it so it had to be maintained?
My preference would be for it to be planted in the ground, but if planning commission wants to plant, it's just, I've found that planters tend to disappear after time. I'm not saying they would, but I've just, historically from the.
You make them heavy enough and they won't disappear.
Some stay, granted, and, but, so, all the ones at the green have stayed, but they're the size of a car, so.
Right.
But I just, my preference would be to have it mulched and, even if it's, like I said, even if it's not the full length of the building, just, you know, sections of three or four feet.
Okay, I just wanted to get your, y'all's opinion on that.
I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't give me heartburn if you put the planters up and my preference would be.
Looking, looking at the, at the drawings, it appears that the HVAC units stick up above the parapet. Is that true or is that just because it's a drawing and not a photograph?
From this angle, you know, it does appear that they do.
Right.
Those could be screen walls back there as well, there's a condition.
Well, I'm not, I'm not so much concerned about the south, the south side, I'm concerned about the side that you see from Dayton's Union Road, which would be the other three sides.
It would be the, the two long sides and this front side.
Right. Now, if they, I'm sorry.
If they add the cornice, that would help screen them as well.
Okay. If we were, if they were to only have the cornice on the north side, that is facing Dayton's Union Road, you would be able to see those HVAC units from going down Dayton's Union in either east or west, is that correct?
They would still be able to screen them with another green wall or stuff. You'd see, you see that at, or supposed to see that at Autozone there on North Fairfield.
Okay.
All right, on, from my visual standpoint or from my, our design standpoint, I think that it just wouldn't look right to have just the one wall cornice, because when you're driving down North Fairfield or Dayton's Union, you're going to see the profile of a cornice.
It's going to look like one of the old west saloons.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
You've got the front, we don't got the sides.
You're in Deadwood, Deadwood, South Dakota, so, I mean, that would be, that's just my, would be my opinion on that.
And the, the final question is, if my memory serves me, that stretch of Dayton's Union Road is pretty flat. There, there's not an upgrade or a downgrade for several blocks in either direction. It starts to dip once you get past Knoll Wood, but it's pretty flat all the way to Grinch Hall Road, is it not?
I think those buildings up here, they sit up pretty high off the road.
They do, but I mean, what I'm talking about is line of sight for this sign. I could understand, I could understand the need for a taller plinth to put the sign on if this was in, in a dip.
Oh, okay.
But it's pretty flat along there.
Relatively, I mean, there's a little dip, but.
The right-of-way actually is pretty flat along there, so, and.
It's, there's some contours there, I'm not saying it's, it's completely flat or anything, but.
It's not really hilly like it is as you get further east towards the library, where it really dips down and back up again.
In front of the Dern Ball Farm and all that.
Exactly. I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm trying to picture some of the other newer signs along Dayton's Union Road and they are pretty small.
I mean, like AAAA, those are, that's 25 square feet.
I noticed the one just going in tonight, the new sign in front of Barney's Hardware Store, that's a five-foot sign, is it not?
Yeah.
Okay.
She just did a permit for that.
Which replaced the pole sign. I, I hate to be a bearer of bad tidings to the folks from, from Dollar General, but we have been death on pole signs here for a number of years. When they, when they die, they're replaced with ground signs.
I mean, Woodcroft, Woodcroft, I think, has got an eight-foot sign, but they've got 15 tenants on that sign.
Right.
So that's why, that.
Exactly.
Just to give it the scale.
Okay, I, I think that's all the, the questions I have, thanks a lot. Okay, second helpings. Yes, ma'am?
I have one more question for the applicant. If we were to adjust condition number 27 to have the downspouts on the eastern side, do you have any opposition to them being painted congruent to the building?
No, not at all.
That's the only other question I had.
Could I address the last question that the chair had?
Yes, go right ahead.
The site that we are, that we're looking at here, it does dip off of the road fairly substantially by the time you get down, down the drive and to the building.
Okay.
I do have some photographs of the site, if you'd like to see them.
If that's the house I'm thinking of, you don't need to show me the photograph because I remember it, it's.
State Farm office?
Yes, okay.
Yes.
But your ground sign is going to be out pretty close to the right-of-way, is it not?
Yes, it is.
As long as it doesn't, of course, have a line of sight problem. So you'll be able to see that before you see the store.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And just to build on, on your question, if you wouldn't have any objections to having internal downspouts so that they drain properly, obviously, you don't want to put a downspout on the side of the building that's uphill side. It just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Right.
But if, if, we have for a number of years required internal spouting on our building simply because it looks nicer and it doesn't get beat up. So if we just say internal spouting according to how the pitch of the roof, you wouldn't have a problem with that?
Is, can I accomplish that with pilasters?
If you want to build them into those.
I don't want to put the downspouts inside the envelope of the building.
Additional pilasters or pilasters that stick further out is not a problem?
Basically, we just build out.
There you go. We just don't want to see downspouts on the outside of the building, they're, they're too vulnerable.
Yes, sir. And actually, on that side of the building, there's no cars, no people, it's.
If you put them into these gray.
Right, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Okay. That, that's fine, it's fine with me, I, I can't speak for my, my four cohorts here, but that's fine. We just don't want to see the downspouts.
Understood.
Disguise them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, lady, gentleman? Okay, I need a motion then.
Are you going to address the fence too then?
Ah, yes.
Number 22, 23, something.
Do we need to address it? It says if constructed, so.
Well, the motion maker.
Well, I don't know what.
The motion maker should, should address that.
He just removed the condition altogether.
Well, okay, well, I just was going to say, no fence is required, but if constructed, the fence shall be made of vinyl.
I prefer that language.
Sounds perfect.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
No fence is required, but.
Okay, now I want a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD 18-3, site-specific plan number one with the 28 conditions and number 20, was it 23?
Mm-hmm.
Amended, as discussed, if the fence is constructed, but it's not required.
Okay. And do we need anything else on the downspout?
27 as well.
Right.
I'm, I'm not proposing anything.
I'm not as well, I am against that proposal altogether. I would like to see completely internal gutters like we do every other building.
Well, it says internal, external downspouts shall be prohibited except on the southern side. Just scratch out the last part of it and then it'll say external downspouts will be prohibited. If they're inside the pilasters, they're not external.
Right, I would consider inside the pilaster an internal downspout.
As long as they're internal.
So who's my maker?
So I propose to amend condition number 27 to remove the last part of that.
Okay.
The except on the southern elevation and have it instead read external downspout shall be prohibited.
Okay, and you as the maker have no problem with that, so we don't have to vote on that separately?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Then I have a second, okay? Time to read the roll.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. We're looking forward to seeing this go forward. Okay, we are all finished with public hearings and it's time, we have a decision item, PUD 88-21, some of us were alive back then, mod 1118, this is the mall, minor, minor facade renovation. So this is a minor mod, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Sorry, I have a little bit of a cold. The applicant is requesting approval to modify the exterior of the Sears Department Store to accommodate two new tenants within the mall at Fairfield Commons. So as all of you are aware, the Sears store will be closing, I believe it is this weekend. And so the applicants have found two new tenants to go into that existing space, one will go in the top floor and one will go into the bottom floor. The room place is a furniture store that is being proposed to go into that upper level. And then we have Round One Entertainment, which is a bowling alley slash arcade type of use, which will go into the bottom floor. So as, as part of that new occupation of that Sears space, the applicant is proposing to renovate the facade of the entire Sears Department Store. So there will be two separate facades, one for the upstairs, one for the downstairs. They will kind of have some of the same colors incorporated together, so they, they kind of blend together, but they will be a little bit different than, than the rest of the mall. So the, the current mall, as you all know, is, is kind of made up of a tan, tan brick and then a lighter colored ephesus. This is the upper level of the Sears and this would be the room place that's being proposed. So what the applicant is proposing to do is to, to paint the, the exterior brick a gray color. Then they would also have, oops, they would also have ephesus flanking the, the new entrance that would be constructed. And that entrance would be made up of a, a aluminum composite paneling, so it's a gray color as well. They would be proposing to add some new windows into that entrance. This is an existing room place, obviously, it's a little bit different than what, what this one would look like, but just to give you an idea of what the, that aluminum paneling kind of looks like and what, what it would look like here as well. Then the round one would be located on that, the lower level and it would, it would be that same gray color. This is the entrance over by the Dick's Sporting Goods, so it sits down below and it's kind of back in that little corner. So they're also proposing a new ephesus entrance and the, some red accent banding and then a portion of the building here would be covered with ephesus and painted red as well. And then, and that's, that's this elevation. And then you have the side, which is currently the Sears Auto Center, and that is, the upper level here is room place, and then you have the bottom level, which is the Round One Entertainment, all the same gray color as well, and that's that, that elevation that's existing now. As far as signage goes, the applicant is proposing a hundred-square-foot sign at the entrance of the Round One and an additional 100-square-foot sign at the entrance of the room place as well. Then we have two smaller signs, 50 square feet, one here at that entrance, and then a small room place sign which indicates where the customer pickup is, and then one more for Round One on this elevation and one here. The mall at Fairfield Commons sign package does outline the amount of signage that's permitted for the site. This goes over that just a little bit. Staff feels that it's not really an issue since the original, the original criteria, the original sign criteria for the department stores, it was addressing one store. And since this is two separate tenants, we feel that, you know, going over that signage by 100 square feet isn't really an issue. And then we also have the bowling pin here, which doesn't, isn't really covered by our code in any way, just because it's, it's, it's different, but we don't have an issue with it, it adds a little bit of character, it's, it's sitting down in that corner, it's not really visible from anywhere, so, so we don't have an issue with it, but it is part of the sign package that, that you guys are approving tonight as well. Staff is recommending approval with the four conditions in the attached staff report. And if you have any questions, I can answer those and also the applicant is here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Another comprehensive report. Okay, just so everybody knows, this is a minor mod to a PUD, so this is where we are administrative, just like the medical marijuana thing, it's our, it's our approval, it, it lives or dies by us, it does not go on to council. So, your turn.
You're first?
Yep, you're first.
I have just a couple of questions for you real quick. Any concern from your end as far as the bright red and the incongruent nature to everything else in that area?
Yeah, I mean, originally, we did, we, originally, we had some concerns. When they first came to us, it was a lot more red. So they've, they've made, you know, they've.
They've toned that down.
Yes, we, we came to an agreement, we think this looks a lot better. We don't have, we don't have such a big issue with the red because of where it sits, the fact that it sits below and it's back in the corner, it's not, it's not visible from Fairfield, it's not.
Sure, that's why I was going to ask which side is it very.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's down in the, here, I think I have the aerial, yeah, down in this little crook here.
Yep.
Which, you know, it sits down below, so, I mean, we don't have an issue with it and, and it's, it's a lot better than it was.
Yeah.
And it actually, I think it looks a lot better than a lot of the other ones there, a lot of them around the country.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Why, and then, so I guess staying in that whole color conversation, why are we going gray with these two buildings? Are the, like Mel and those other new outlots, are those done more in this modern design language?
Yeah, I think, I think what we're seeing a lot with all, I mean, with a lot of developments, even the Dunkin' Donuts and a lot of the, the new stuff, the, the Donatos that they just did up here on Fairfield, like, and the McDonald's, they're going with these kind of darker, more modern tones and, and I think that's something that, that they're doing. Honestly, the mall is, is looking a little bit dated, a little bit early 90s, so.
Well, it is early 90s.
Yeah, so we're, you know, we're, we're, we're open to, to kind of seeing these renovations and, and over time, I mean, the Elder Beerman's vacant, I'm, I'm assuming that at some point, you know, that's going to change as well, so.
Has the mall, have they been involved in this at all as far as like design of?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've met with, with the mall, with the mall people as well as Yeah, yeah, we've met with the mall, with the mall people as well as their architects on working through this from the beginning stages.
So have they had any conversation with, this would be their new design language going forward, if and when they decided to do some refacing and things like that?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. We haven't had discussions with them about refacing any other parts of the mall. You know, we're just taking it step by step, and as we go, if, you know, if the different department stores do change, we're going to look to kind of keep everything kind of looking similar.
I mean, I love, I love all the gray and everything. It's awesome, but yeah, it does, there's a little bit of a hodgepodge.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
As long as we just do that every tenant that comes in, keep making sure that they keep the common design language, I'm fine with that.
That's what we're striving for, is, as it moves forward, we'll keep it consistent.
Okay, I think I'll yield over to Mr. ...
Can I piggyback on you quick?
So in this picture here, is that gray going to go all the way to the entrance?
All the way back to this point.
Is it, so it's not going to be that, is it going to go all the way to entrance B there?
I believe so. No? Are you going to stop it to the edge?
So we'll have...
Oh, right, so it'll be right here. So it's their, the actual, their building, yeah.
Okay.
So this part here, this little flat part, won't be part of that, but I mean, it's hidden behind that tree.
Great, thank you.
And I had no further questions either, so thank you very much, sorry.
Sure.
I have no questions.
Dang.
Man with no questions today.
Questions? Comments?
Mr. Chair, I do not have any questions.
Okay, Ms. Akers?
Can we go back to that picture one more time, please?
I think I'm going the wrong direction here.
That one, yeah.
Okay.
Who owns that portion there? Is that the malls? I mean, it doesn't belong to any tenant there?
This here, yeah, that's part of the main mall entrance area, like the communal mall area.
Upstairs entrance you go in, and you go into Sears.
And you said there were no discussions on potentially changing. What is on the other side of that? I'm sorry, I know that you don't have a picture there, but...
So...
You have a pizza place?
Yeah, Spinoza's.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, Spinoza's is in this little crook here on this side. And then you have the outlaw restaurants out here. So this is upper, this is up high, and then this steps down.
Okay. Interesting, okay. No further questions?
Okay. I've got just a couple. This, I know we have, I wouldn't say fought, but it has been contentious for some time when someone came in wanting to fool around with the exterior of the mall. I recall the California Pizza Kitchen fiasco. So the staff is now looking, and apparently mall owners don't seem to have a problem with this breaking up the mall's, the unified exterior that the mall started out with 27 years ago.
Yeah.
Seems like a long time. So, staff doesn't have a problem with this?
I think that the traditional mall of the 90s is kind of going by the wayside, and we need to be creative and find some new ways to occupy, you know, these much larger spaces that, you know, a lot of tenants don't want to really move into anymore, and that's why we thought this was a really good opportunity to have these two tenants move into this big space that now isn't going to be empty for very long, you know, and hopefully, we can find the same for the Elder Beerman as well.
Folks, that's why we have a professional staff here to guide us on things like this. And the only part of that toned-down red that shows, other than to the northwest side, is that just looks like a little short stretch.
Yeah, it's just a little, a little corner here, and we allowed them to put a sign there too, because actually, I think that was at staff's suggestion, was to add a sign on that side because it sits low down there for people to be able to see that the Round One is down, down in that part of the...
Okay, thank you very much. I'm pleased as punch that we're getting new tenants so quickly, and we don't have a big empty box there, so way to go, staff. And way to go with the mall owners, too. Okay, folks, any second helpings here? Questions?
I've just had one last question. Are we going to address the signage for pins going forward? My attempt at a joke.
Well, we were just, we were just hoping they didn't want a large bowling ball out in the parking lot to go with the pin. So we would have trouble figuring out whether that was a sign or not, like the NASCAR car out in front of Quaker Steak and Lou.
Or the Big Boy, or the Chili.
We could not figure out if that was a sign or if it was a car.
Sure.
So thank you, guys, for not putting us on the spot with that. Okay, folks, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD 88-12, mod 1118.
With the...
With four conditions.
Four conditions, okay.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Thank you, ma'am. I've got a motion and a second. Any last helpings here before we have a vote? Go right ahead.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 5-0, and we're looking forward to construction starting. Any idea when that might be? Great. For those of you who didn't hear that, they're going to start the project in January, so we're looking forward to it. Thank you. One final item, and that goes hand in glove with the earlier Dunkin' Donuts. This is a subdivision request.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Really quickly, the applicant is requesting approval of a final subdivision for approximately 3.6 acres in order to create a lot for the proposed Dunkin' Donuts restaurant. So the Dunkin' Donuts would be located on lot number two, which is right along North Fairfield Road, approximately six tenths of an acre, and then lot number one would be the remainder of the property, the 2.92 acres. The only thing other than that is that the, there is a small portion of right-of-way that is to be dedicated. We did add a condition that the final right-of-way dedication be approved by our engineer before we sign off on the actual plot, before you and the director sign off on the plot. We want to make sure that that's the amount of right-of-way that they are approving to be dedicated. So staff is recommending approval with three conditions in the attached staff report, and if you have any questions, I can answer those now, and Ms. Burkhardt is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This is one of Tom Pollock's famous no-brainers. We're doing basically a lot split to accommodate this, Sandra. We're doing basically a lot split.
Yes, that's correct.
Anyone have any questions about this? This is kind of one of those pro forma things. Okay, then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S18-8 with the attached three conditions.
Okay.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Let's be formal and read the, read the roll.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, so things are all in motion for a donut shop. Gentlemen, Ms. Akers, anything else for the good of the order?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I have a motion.
Second motion.
I have a second, and we'll kind of do that by walking out. Thank you very much, and I'll see you next year.